Or.
Here.
Garrett.
Here.
Locars. Miller. Henry. Howard.
Here.
Tull.
Here.
Approval of the agenda.
I'll move to approve the, um, the agenda for February twenty fifth, twenty twenty five, just with the typo of Meadows. M E A D O W S.
Can I have a second?
I second it.
I have motion to accept the agenda with a correction. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign. Gary's. Approval of the minutes for January twenty eighth, two thousand twenty five.
I'll move to approve the minutes from January twenty eighth, twenty twenty five. There was two corrections submitted to the clerk on the spelling affair and then an addition of motion carried under one of, after our motion. I think it's second page.
I have a motion to accept. Can I have a second, please?
I'll second.
Second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign. Gary's. New business. PBM Wireless ATT Monopole Twenty Eight Thirty Bartlett Site Plan Number One. Anybody here to speak to?
Yes.
Name and address, please.
Uh, good evening. My name is Brian Monahan. Uh, my address is, uh, what is my address? Uh, nine two nine West University Rochester, or Rochester, Michigan, four eight, three oh seven. Uh, suite one oh two. Uh, I don't really want to repeat a lot of what I may, uh, said to the commission last time we were here on the, uh, special land use. Um, I will, I know there's some issues that the engineer had in a letter. Uh, those of all are in the process of being addressed. We unfortunately do not have the finalized site point at the night, but, um, Steve Carr, who's with PBS Wireless, he's been leading the spearheading the whole site plan issue. He's been in contact with the engineer.
Okay.
Um, and I think you've been in contact with the planner as well. Um, whatever you guys want us to do, we're willing to do it basically, uh, as to the site plan. Um, the only thing I would ask is that we, whatever changes or other things that may still need to be done on the site plan, if we could have it be contingent on some sort of administrative approval subsequent, so we don't need to come back. Um, the, uh, uh, either the engineer or the planner or both, you know, could sign off on the final. Anyway, uh, if there's any questions, either myself or Steve would be happy to address it.
I do have a question based on the letter that we received or the correspondence that you guys had. I think the major hurdle is going to be, it's number six in regards to your, your vegetation. And so as a result, there is a standard here in the ordinance being number six, page one fourteen, um, being minimum height of five feet on fifteen foot center along the entire perimeter of the tower and related structure sufficient to be reasonable green belt, visual barrier and buffer, or such other green belt and barrier as the planning commission may approve. So are you going to meet this standard? Are you asking for something other than this standard?
We can meet this standard. We don't have a problem meeting that at all.
Okay. Okay.
Any other questions? I, I have just one. I'm, I'm for this. I wasn't here last time, but the height is what, one?
One ninety.
One ninety?
Actually, it's one ninety five. One ninety five.
Yeah. My, my concern was, was tall enough to go across Bartlett Road if by any chance forbid that it fell.
Well, it, it's designed, it's a monopole construction. It's literally designed to fall in, in on itself.
Okay.
The actual fall zone of a monopole is like less than one third of the height.
Okay. That was my concern. Thank you.
Okay. I guess the other two things that we already talked about was the barbed wire and that's in your special use on the fencing. And then the second part would be the access drive, just for confirmation in regards to what the drawing would be submitted being it is going to come off of Barth Road only and then also meeting the requirements of the fire department when requested.
Uh, yes. Once again, Steve Carr, twenty eight ninety four Aldersgate Drive, Greenwood, Indiana, four six one four three. Um, we did have discussions with the zoning representative and he asked for a thirteen foot wide gate per the pri- fire department's request, uh, preferred fourteen. I prefer even numbers over odd.
Okay.
So if we could put that into there, that we will make that requirement, that's good. Uh, the landscaping, we are in fact agreeable to. Um, the, uh, other items that were addressed by the letter that we received from Aaron Jones.
Yep.
Um, project control engineer basically, uh, brought up the landscaping, so we already discussed that. Uh, they wanted a copy of the recorded easement, which we in fact provided. Uh, they're, we're looking for a grading and, um, drainage plan, which is what my engineer is working on right now, and we'll make that part of our, um, approval condition upon meeting a grading, uh, plan that is acceptable to the engineering department. The other item, the permit from the road commission, we've already made the initial contact with the road commission, filling out the application, meeting the standards of that said requirement. I just needed clarification from the road commission to determine which they classified me as, since the level of use is less than a single family home.
Right.
Do they in cla- in fact classify me as a residential or slash commercial? So I'm waiting for that response and then I'll buy by all those standards contingent upon that. And the other one being the erosion and sediment control permit, we contacted the St. Clair County folks, provided you guys all with an email that we're less than an acre on our soil disturbance, therefore not required to get that permit. So we've already provided that documentation.
From the health department?
Excuse me?
It's the health department?
Yes. Yes. And then the last item is upon completion, provide as-built construction drawings in AutoCAD. That's something that we, we can agree to as well.
Any other questions? Board want to do?
I'll move to approve the site plan approval on the following conditions stated in the January thirtieth, twenty twenty five letter from PCE with the additional clarification that it would be a fourteen foot easement up Barth Road for access, meeting the fire department's requirements, no barbed wire on the fence, and meeting the standard for vegetation under ordinance twenty point four oh six, number six. Yes.
Can I have a point of clarification prior to you guys voting on it? When you brought up fourteen foot, I thought you meant the fourteen foot opening of my gate to get into my compound.
Oh, okay. Then we'll clarify that. That's fine.
Yeah.
So what is your easement going to be?
My easement is twenty foot wide and my road is twelve feet wide into that site compound.
Okay. So then, okay, thank you. So you have a twenty foot easement, you're going to do a twelve foot road, it's not road, a twelve foot access drive?
Yes.
Got it. With a fourteen foot gate off Barth.
Not off Barth.
Or?
Fourteen foot gate at my compound, my fence compound. Is that what you were asking for?
Correct.
Yes. That's what the fire department was looking for in case they need to get inside that compound for emergency situation. I would suspect that that's why they want the fourteen.
Wouldn't be out the road.
You're not putting the ga- okay, that's my clarity because I don't have the drawing. So you're not putting the, you're not putting the gate out to the road?
No.
Got it. Okay. That's important. When you look at the picture, you don't know.
This is the actual fencing around the pole itself.
Yeah, that's your, right.
Yes.
It's a sixty by sixty foot compound designed in for additional characters.
Okay. Okay, then. I don't, that's not really a s- I don't feel that that's a site plan issue in regards to that. So I apologize and thank you for the clarity. So I'll, um, I'll amend my motion in regards to, it's the site plan approval on the following conditions stated in the January thirtieth, twenty twenty five letter from PCE with the additional clarity being no barb fire, no barbed wire fence. Um, that there will be a twenty foot easement with a twelve foot access off of Barth, meeting the conditions of the fire department. And you, and you will be meeting the requ- the requirements of number six as stated in section twenty point four oh six.
Landscaping.
For landscaping. That's what number six is.
Yep.
Okay.
I have a motion on the floor. Do a step. Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Okay. I'm going to have her read back the motion. Well, just to make sure everything's clear.
Okay. Um. The permit, uh, the, 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 site plan approval, um, based on, or you know, with no barbed wire fence, um, with a twenty foot easement, twelve foot access drive, fourteen foot gate at the compound. With meeting number six of twenty point four oh six, the landscape.
Yeah, you can scratch the gate. We're not.
Okay, okay. That's what I got. I mean, I am recording it.
Yep. The access is off of Barth.
Oh, access is off of?
Did you say Barth or Bartlett?
Bartlett, Bartlett.
She, just for the record, she didn't mention the letter conditions from the.
Oh, the letter.
Yeah, and then, yeah.
The January?
Thirtieth.
Thirtieth letter from PCE.
Yep.
Have her roll call, please.
Um, Barrett?
Yes.
Tull?
Yes.
Locars?
Yes.
Howard?
Yes.
Or.
Yes.
Gentlemen, thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Anyhow, nice to be back.
You don't have to.
And for the record, we told you, you didn't have to come.
And you look at, and it's sun- and it's still sunny outside.
Yeah. For the record, we said you didn't have to come.
Okay. Atkins Meadow.
We have fresh print just rolled up on your desk. They just came in prior to the meeting. Thank you, Scott, for bringing them.
Not a problem. Uh, Scott Beeden, seventeen twelve Military Street Port here in Michigan. I'm the agent, um, for the developer of Atkins Meadows. Uh, I'm, I'm sure some of you in the room recall this subdivision was designed in, in, on paper back in oh eight when we had the eight thousand square foot stuff on the lots. And, um, Mr. Akavetti had, uh, Tectra Tech at the time, uh, bringing a full set of drawings back then. Rules have changed. We, um, a year ago, almost to the day, um, we had some, uh, developers, uh, interested in the site and made an offer to acquire the property, subject to those plans being revised. So what you have in front of you is the new twenty thousand square foot per lot minimum. Um, I think it took it from like one twenty to like ninety-one lots, um, by doing that, but we were able to get enough that still seems to have served for the developer, um, to do that to move forward. So we've been, um, a little bit of a labor of love. The developers out of Soho, New York, I am not, but they are. Um, we, uh, employed Matt Mueller to, um, from Bayview to do their, do our drawings and get to the, the township spec of the new requirements. Those came hot off the press. We tried to fast track as much as we could to get this, uh, on the agenda so that you guys could review. We did the engineering review. I think you guys have those letters from PCE and, um, we got those back a week ago. So, um, Matt decided to dip out of the country on me, so I'm, I'm here solo for a minute, uh, while he's vacationing, but, uh, we're working on, um, getting these requirements, um, from PCE back on paper to those prints. Um, and would look to, um, just kind of get a blush and a preliminary feel from planning on where we're at today.
Then for the record, this is per our ordinance, the preliminary plan review. Okay.
Yes.
Water taps.
Water and sewer are avail- are, are available on Lapeer Road.
Okay.
Getting them to this site, we're working on, uh, with, uh, two different developers and, uh, the two different engineers to make this happen.
Mm-hmm.
And it, there's plenty more discussion.
Yeah. How many taps do we have total?
On Lapeer Road, we have over four hundred.
Okay.
Well over four. Menaria, Menaria Estates was, remember that one, Brad? On Lapeer?
No, that one I don't.
Okay, there, that, that was.
Maybe in a different name, but I don't, that doesn't trigger.
And Menaria Estates across from Pete's Camping, that whole field there.
Yeah. Oh, okay.
Yeah.
But I thought.
There was three hundred lots there. Well.
I thought they wanted to bring in a mall. And they, well, when they showed up here, they wanted us to put in a, water sewer.
Scat deep.
Anyway, there's plenty of taps.
Okay.
Good.
Okay.
Just getting.
Get in there.
Alan Road. And, uh, and the school wants to get off of their, their pond back there.
No.
Okay.
So we're trying to work with the school district also.
Good luck.
Can we?
They're, they're willing.
Okay. Being preliminary and discussion in what's, can we talk about roads? That being, because we've had plans before where it's like, well, we want to go private and I see this is, you know, a site condo and you have that right to do that, but I don't get the impression you're doing that.
Or not.
Right? And so you're going to meet the road commission's regulations associated with that. So has there been feedback from the road commission in regards to this double access as there's an issue or a comment being proposed to us from the engineer?
Yeah, I don't have that back, Brad.
Okay.
From them. Like I said, we got this back a week ago.
Okay.
I, Matt got it at the same time. I don't know what he has done and I don't have access to it.
There, where the project, uh, and all that has to be.
Would that be a, would that be a done deal if we said no to the secondary access point? You know, would that be a killer?
Not on our part.
Yeah.
Um, you know.
Because it's not big enough to get you another lot though, either, right?
No. So we would, if, if it became a, a point of contention that we're not going to do that, those two lots are going to get bigger.
I'm just thinking because it is a residential area.
Yeah, I, I think.
And, you know, you have that whole argument, if you do have one point on, you know, the drive-through aspect, you have the school there, so it could become an issue and then that curve there is not the greatest.
Right.
So that's my concern.
It's not on our part. We, I think, um, honestly, Bayview was looking at it from a safety side of the fire department wanting another way in.
And I, I understand that also.
But we're, we're not in love with it. I mean, it wouldn't, wouldn't break our heart either way. We just want to play nice on that.
Right.
So is the fire chief?
He likes two accesses.
Yeah.
And, uh.
I, I'm not a fan of where that's being proposed at all.
And the county, um, likes, uh, over three hundred feet from any intersection, which is well past three hundred feet.
I understand that, but that intersection is not a typical intersection.
Right.
So, you know.
That, that road that goes out onto Atkins, what about the road itself?
Yeah.
This is far down from the, the corner.
I, I understand that, but.
There's another whole eighty acres in between.
I know, but.
I know.
I will redrive that, but that section of Atkins, just that section is not visibility and I don't, I, I, just as a personal, it's not the greatest, Neil, at all. So.
Plus, we're going to redo the road this year.
So.
All right. Because I heard that we don't have a lot of houses on there and that road, what, didn't really matter. But for this, I would think you'd want some smooth.
We're redoing our part of the road.
Okay.
Clyde did their part.
That's good, because my boss is going to get mad at you if he's not.
Yeah, ideally, we would dedicate them to the county.
Yeah.
And however they want us to egress in and out of it.
But, but there could be the possibility in regards that it's there in the plains if needed, but not necessarily built.
There's our counterpart right there with, with Matt. So we would defer, honestly, we would defer to county road and, and.
I understand.
Yeah.
Where, where's the, uh, high-powered lines run across? Is that beside it?
West.
West, okay.
It's, you can see it right there. It's right.
I don't have my plan on.
The drive there. You see it where it comes across? Atkins.
Yep. I don't have my plan unrolled.
I guess.
No, that's, that's fine. I'm fine.
On the west side of the property, it comes across the first of the walls and then runs the west line above those parts straight up.
Right there, right there, there. The barn is right up there. So it's, the intersection is way, there's the barn. It's way down here, the intersection.
So lots sixty one and then eighty-four through ninety-one, will those all be individual driveways? Because I don't see any access to those homes. Will those be driveways that are going to?
The, but Atkins?
Yeah.
Yeah, we wouldn't, that's in the subdivision, correct?
Yes.
So we're not, we're not fronting on Atkins with driveways. It would be kind of like Castlewood on West Water where the backyards are on the road.
No, no.
No, that's her.
You're coming off Atkins Road.
You're coming after.
That's her, that's her comment.
Those are on.
Part of the sub, but access will be off of Atkins.
Okay.
Okay.
Yeah, that's her comment. Condominium units with frontage along an existing road such as Atkins Road, Road is generally discouraged but not prohibited. The planning commission may require alternatives if there are safety concerns. So that is, you know, that's the point.
They're, they're single-family houses.
Mm-hmm.
Kind of, you know, they're no different than.
Well, we know that, but soon as you put the subdivision, people are going to come to us and say, well, like they always do, we need, we need an answer as to, you know. You understand what I'm saying?
No, I don't.
Well, they, they did, they did down here at the, at the, uh, subdivision they want to put in there. They, they're afraid of the traffic volume.
Yeah, look at Range Road. You have all those houses that Horace put in.
Yeah.
You're going fifty-five miles an hour. Now these residents, their front yards are right there. Their kids play in this high-speed area. How hard would it be able to back out of that driveway? So now you have people trying to back out. Traffic goes slam and it stops. So I see the same thing happening here. That's why I asked. It's just not conducive to what makes sense.
It's just like, just like West Water. It's just like.
So moving forward, let's not do the same things we've always done that aren't working and let's make better decisions, right? I mean, that's.
So she asks in here and to Gary's point, is this a phased-in project? And if so, wh- do you guys, do you know what your phases are or we'll just wait? Or do you want us to wait?
Well, it's definitely phased in. I do know that. Um, the point of attack, I think part of those answers have got to be, because part of those questions have got to be answered through what we're doing with sewer.
Okay.
And how we, and how we play that strategy. I don't have that.
And you don't know that. Okay, yeah. Got it. Okay. Because that's why I was just wondering, if you guys are going to phase it in, um, you don't have to answer me, Scott, but would you be tackling off of an Allen Road first or i- are you wanting to tack, tackle an Atkins Road? You know, and I think that would have to be your point, you know, when you guys discuss that.
Yeah, all of our conversation, just to be open with it, has always been that we would phase in off of Allen.
Okay.
Um, get the pond in, take it basically to, you know, just beyond the pond, to get that part all done up front. Unless there's something that we come across that we would change our mind on how we would phase it, but that would be where our point would start.
And then what are your guys' thoughts in regards to, or your plan of attack associated with the condo association that has or has not been drafted yet in regards to, if you're going to do publics, public roads and public sewer, it's going to be primarily the pond. So are you, is this going to be private in regards to the storm drain and the drainage or somehow you're going to connect this to the county somehow, so it's their problem?
Yeah, my understanding is it's going to the county and I think, and I think there's a solution already devised off of Atkins.
Okay.
From our original plans that we had with Tectra Tech. I think that still is in play.
Who's going to mow the detention pond, though? Yeah. Okay.
I'm a real estate agent. I don't, I don't know.
I just know from experience, this, you know, it's this kind of stuff. That's.
Yeah.
If, if, if the kind of association is going to get away with it, they're not going to have to mow it. They're going to be knocking on this door saying, who's mowing it?
No, they'll, they'll hire somebody to come in and, you know, mow the lawns and.
I'm just saying in regards to being, you know, then, then there would be no objection to have some kind of maintenance agreement attached to this project.
Correct. Project, yeah, that's the.
Yeah. Yep. Okay.
Have a maintenance agreement with the township.
I'm pigging back on a comment. We're trying to learn from things that we have messed up in the past or we know more, so let's do better.
Good point.
Okay.
So it was kind of a meet and greet.
Mm-hmm. Yep.
Uh, I gave you a pre-p preliminary one a couple of months ago. Now we got this one.
Mm-hmm.
I have been in contact with the two different engineers and the health department. We'll see about Eagle getting the sewer in the water.
Not that we have any jurisdiction over, but will you get, do you guys have some side elevations or?
They're probably not ready yet.
Lot, you have your lots, but do you have your building size? Do, are you going to have a minimum building size in your condos?
Yes.
The twenty thousand is minimum.
That's the lot.
Correct. Oh, you're talking about.
I'm talking about the house. You don't have that yet.
No, they use.
Yeah.
Yeah, we.
Now, we don't have jurisdiction, but just to see, I know that if Mr. Miller was here, he would make a comment about that, where he lives, because that has been an issue, but that's not our issue, but. In regards to sizes of house, are you going to make a minimum that it's fifteen hundred square feet or something?
Uh, there'll be a minimum. I think it's going to be a little smaller than that.
Oh, okay.
It all depends on where all of this comes in on our bid.
Got it. Okay.
Honestly.
Okay. Anything else you'd like to ask us?
No, I, I just wanted to dance in front of you and get, get, get the juices going and let you know where we're at. And like I said, this game does a week ago with, with the comments from PCE, so we will, we will be tackling those and, and we'll see you again.
Will we see you next month then, you think?
Yeah, we're gonna try. There's some.
Can I ask who this gentleman is?
He's, he's with Bayview Engineering.
Okay.
Yeah.
With the, with the drain commission. I've been in contact with them on a few things that we didn't know about. First is the layout, so there's things that can make change, but, um, I don't see a reason why we shouldn't be. I've actually got probably ninety percent of these already done.
Yeah, it's definitely our intention to, at this point, fast-track to get, get it started, so we can get some.
So you want to shovel, be ready, shovel ready by next month?
Sure.
Hey.
So I was, I was a little late getting in, I'm sorry, but, uh, I was just, I found out that there was no sewer access. Um.
It's from Lapeer.
When I laid this out, we were working, trying to work with Jay Folsky, pump station. I designed all the Jay stuff for him and his pump station and everything, so when I did this, we were to try and work with him and share that. Now I, I understand that's all out the window. So are, is there sewer taps available for, for this? And if so, where, where is the local?
Can I?
This is the gentleman.
Yeah, can I, because it's off of Lapeer, correct? For clarification purposes.
The road commission's not going to let us tap in underneath the, uh, gravel.
Gotcha.
So in front of the gas station, it's seventeen feet deep.
Yeah, I designed that whole thing.
Yeah.
I designed Forest Main down the, yeah, I worked with the road commission. They wouldn't let me go under the roundabout, so I had to route it just to the west of it. So is that still the same?
It is.
Right.
Cap? Okay, so that's pretty much the same thing.
Gravity would take us a long ways.
Yes.
Seventeen feet.
Yeah.
Yeah, well, I got it all the way to Jay's.
Because Clyde doesn't have sewers.
Gravity?
Yeah.
There's.
From Jay's, um, let me see, hundred and eighty, that has been, it's been over a year and a half since I, I looked.
So does sewer then stop at Castlewood?
It stops at Castlewood.
Okay. Because there is no sewer on Clyde. That's only water only on that side.
Correct.
So, yeah, so it's kind of sat at Castlewood because the school is on its own and then.
On Lagoon.
Yeah, it's on that lagoon.
Which they want to get off of.
Yep, okay.
They want to walk up.
Yep. So it's only off of Lapeer. So then where does the sewer stop then? On Atkins? The pump station there, like behind the gravel?
Just third house.
There, because there is a pump station.
And that only takes three houses.
Yeah, three houses, east. Okay. Gotcha. Yep. Okay.
So we'll get together.
There's an island.
Monte and yourselves and D W and see what we can come up with quickly here. I don't know, it's going to happen in thirty days, but at least you can put them on the agenda.
Yep.
And.
Oh, yeah.
Extend.
Thank you, Mr. Beeden.
I appreciate the time.
Thank you, Mr. Beeden.
Yeah, thanks so much.
Good luck. Okay. Old business. Master plan review. We, uh, what happened last month? I wasn't here.
Um, we sent out, uh, the master plan to all the local, uh, the neighborhood communities. We did that a week and a half ago. And that's been, I guess, it's hard to find.
Can we get an electronic copy of the one attached to that notice?
So I will put, um, I will figure that out. I have to send in this flash drive.
Okay.
To everybody because of the.
Size?
Size.
Okay.
Um, I, I'm waiting to hear back tomorrow because I really want to put it on the website at my layer so that the community can see it as well without having to have all these flash drives out. But, um, I'll at least put a flash drive in your guys' boxes, so.
Okay. Thank you.
Audience participation.
We have, um, Ray Campbell.
Hi, Mr. Campbell.
How are you?
Good. Thank you, Mr. Campbell.
What a beautiful day today, isn't it?
Good, huh? It's kind of nice. Gorgeous. Unless you like the smell.
Wants it melt slowly.
Yeah.
But you can't sit there.
Thank you, sir.
I'm Ray Campbell. Live at two ninety-nine Eileen Avenue. And as it has it, on today's agenda, my concern is sewer allocations.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, I've been doing a lot of research on it and this has been a pretty interesting topic over the. I've been doing a lot of research on it, and this has been a pretty interesting topic over the years. And in the past, the planning commission was pretty involved in, in the sewer allocation. And, um, I just took a couple excerpts, I ran them, but, but just for example, there's, they just had one there similar to what we just saw with Atkins, where they wanna put in development. And the, the commission comes back and says that they can't approve more than the township is able to provide. And they can't reserve allocations. So, when they're developing this, for example, and I think it's ninety-one units, it looks like, those can't be held. And then sometime in the future, they may not be there, but the whole thing that I'm trying to bring up is the sewer allocation map seems to be pretty critical. And at some point, um, there was, or perhaps there still is, an actual sewer allocation map. And also a sanitary sewer policy. And the sanitary sewer policy indicates that they need to have an allocation detail map of sewer allocations, districts, sewer service areas, and non-sewer service areas. Various discussions at the commission wanted this map displayed at the planning commission. I don't know, Mr. Orr, maybe you remember that? One time, if you look back, they were actually talking about having it here, so they could keep focus on it. So sewer allocation, to me, is a critical issue. And it needs to be front and center. It used to be at one time, maybe it's before you gentlemen were involved. But nevertheless, it's an excellent idea, having it right there. Of course, now we got these great screens. But when we talk about sewers, to me, it should be right there. Do we have the allocation? Cause we have a known problem downstream, for sure. How does Lapeer impact? I don't know. So, but it should all come down to allocations. You either have them or you don't have them. And I didn't see anyone, you know, referring to that. And I'm just saying, why not? I personally like to know, what's our sewer allocations? What do we have in reserve, and how close are we to capacity? Cause we already know, because of Grace, that's a leg there, we are apparently at a difficult situation. So, to me, in the past, the planning commission took a pretty hard line, said, we don't have the allocations, you don't get the, the permits, you can't connect. And to me, that needs to be managed upfront. Now, it should be, and, and nothing came up with Atkins, and that's great. And they may, you may have capacity, I don't know, but they're going along on a development, on a sewer system we know is behind. You know, I, I'm, I'm wanting to come here and see, see this addressed, so that we are managing this logically and not overstressing our system.
Well, when, when Atkins Metals came to us, we wanted to have them do this site plan if there wasn't enough allocation. We went and tell them to spend money and then tell them, no, there's, there's not enough sewer.
Well, Neil, that, I'm not saying, all I'm saying here, me as a citizen, uh, the commissioners should be able to look at that map and say, yep, what Neil just said is true. Now, we just have this, I mean, it should be, I'm not saying it's not, but why aren't we looking at it? It shouldn't be a guessing game, it should be right there, we've got, we need to have ninety-one allocations if they build out the whole subdivision, correct? So we either have them or we don't have them. And then, but you can't, based on my, my research says, you can't guarantee, you can't lock those in and preclude somebody else from having those, when, just because there's lots there and they didn't develop it. So it.
What we used to do is have them come back and, and they, when it expired.
And after renewal.
Right. Yeah, and I see all these passes.
I, I have not yet seen a map.
Huh?
I have not yet seen a map of the, as long as I've been on this commission.
Well, Neil, you've been here a long time, right?
Thirty-seven years.
There used to be a map, and did you not bring it?
There's not a map.
There is not an allocation?
No, there's allocation parcels.
Well, again, I don't know, I'm, I'm just looking back at different.
Go by tax ID parcel districts. There's so many sewer allocation districts. In those districts, there's so many used, so many left over. And, and then they figure in lot splits also, if there is water at sewer, uh, if there's a hundred feet of, and twenty thousand square feet of land that could be, uh, could be an extra lot with a tap in, which would not be assessed, there'd be a benefit fee. So there is, there is ways that we do figure it out.
Neil, could we somehow, like, do we know what the capacity is? Cause I mean, if, if Ray brings up a valid point, then can we show him so he can be satisfied?
Yeah.
Okay, there is a sanitary sewer policy. Look in the middle of my thing there.
Yeah.
That sanitary sewer policy says we should have a map. Like, for non-district and district.
Yeah, I mean, we do have district maps, that's, that's a sewer district, we have that.
Well, I don't know what this thing should look like. To me, an allocation map would show, this area's got two hundred and somewhat, and again, it depends on capacity, so it's a little bit, it may have some kind of, uh, log that goes with it, or, you know, cause you put one large sewer taper. But nevertheless, it's clear that this should be a map that defines, so when a development comes in, just like Atkins did, we either absolutely have plenty of capacity there, we may not be able to connect, that's a different issue, but is there a capacity? Because we know, on the Gray side, you're coming back with a five million dollar deal, after the fact with a quote emergency, which is ridiculous, when we shouldn't, we shouldn't be, the planning commission should not have approved that development for occupancy.
I'm not talking about Grace, I'm talking.
I'm just talking about allocations in general. And then it comes down to now, when they're gonna be on, the capacity's gotta be there, or somebody's gotta say halt. Now, how that gets managed, I don't know, but it's clear that there should be an allocation map for both districts. Now, what that should look like?
There is a district map.
Well, these, these gentlemen should all have it, and if you go back to the older planning commissions, they had it, in fact, they were big.
No, they didn't, they didn't have a map.
Well, go look.
I've been here thirty-seven years.
Well, they kept talking about the map. I, I took the excerpts from it, saying that, you know, the map. And they even said the map should be on display, so either they wanted a map and never got it, I don't know, I mean, there's only so many.
David Lordowski, who was the engineer.
He was the engineer, yeah, at the time. There was a, there was a period of time that we talked, cause Bill and I was on the board at the time.
Right.
Cause there was a period of time, remember, when we were revoking. I sat on the township board at that time. Those actions the township board was not happy with, but when we took a little beating on the planning commission in regards to that. And it was more wa- water and sewer. Also, you have to, I think you have to keep in mind, this is, I'm giving you a, you know, what I remember.
So what you, what I'm referring to, you can relate to.
Larger aspect also, because at that time, there was also meetings with Port Huron Township, Kimball Township, Fort Gracia Township. And, well, the townships were meeting because there was an ongoing conversation in regards to the calculation of what capacity was at the treatment plant that they had bought into. And that's a part of this conversation too, which the planning commission is not pervy to, that's an administration township board issue. So, you can have a map all day long, Mr. Campbell, and I'm not saying you're wrong, but I'm, I'm sharing with you what I am aware of. That map can say two forty-two or a hundred, but if you don't have that capacity at the treatment plant, and if there's a dis, if there's a difference of opinion in regards to the capacity of what the township bought and what the city has, that map is not gonna be worth anything. Does that make sense?
Yeah, and it's only one part of the planning process.
Yes.
It doesn't mean there aren't a lot more questions that we haven't even got to.
Right, yes, and I will agree with Neil in regards to how the sewer here in Kimball Township was built. It is based on districts, and it's also in regards to the connectivity of those districts, and also how the special assessment, if there is one, was, was calculated and charged. Because in this area, and I'm not, again, I'm not saying that, I'm just gonna give you a viewpoint.
No, no.
There is a difference on the section over by Marysville in Kimball Township, because there's not connectivity. Because Marysville is on its own set, cause there was a conversation had about, why aren't we tapping in, or why don't we have relations with Marysville? But I'm just gonna leave that at that.
Right.
And then what we're talking about here, being over on Lapeer, there is more connectivity, Lapeer and Allen, there's connectivity in regards to your range road corridor because of where Port Huron Township is and where Kimball is. Because if you will talk to the treasurer, we have some houses there that are flip-flopped. And I remember that on the board in regards to the bill, where some of Port Huron is on the, is on Kimball's billing, and some of, um, there, and vice versa.
Cause of the gravity.
Correct, because I remember, and if they still bill it, Port Huron Township bills their sewer differently than we do, cause they're flat feed. Where we do not. And I remember George explaining that to us at that time. So, yes, I'm not, I agree in regards to your points.
I'm looking at how to manage this.
That this is a point of conversation, yeah.
The map is a topic.
And as, this is just my opinion, where we're at with this development, I don't think, yes, it's important to make notice, but we're not there yet. Cause it was just a preliminary conversation.
Correct.
And they're having a larger obstacle even accessing. So, as a result, when we get there, more than likely, I think it's our due diligence to make those conversations being, hey, you're building these lines now, that's gonna be costly in regards to that. So, what are we talking about capacity? Where is your connectivity? Is it a dead end? And where are we going from here?
Yeah.
But you, it's valid in regards to your concerns.
Well, as a planning commission, this whole thing, you should have answers. What, what is the total capacity?
Right.
Are we up against Port Huron? What will they allow us to take? This is all stuff that's combined.
But we're not there yet.
We don't wanna be against Port Huron, because they want to three engineers.
No. No, I'm not against, I'm talking about just facts, capacity. But if they can't handle the sewage, there's no point in us.
Well, they, we had a problem with that one already, haven't we?
Can I finish right?
Yeah, sure.
I, I was working for the city of Port Huron, at the same time that I was working here, and it was a big discussion. We had many meetings, trying to get more seats on the bus. There's only so many seats on the bus. We, we pay for a third of them, a quarter of them.
Yep.
And we pay for the maintenance of that sewer state, of that. So, they're always trying to get more.
Sure.
And I'm outdated.
Neil, I'm not questioning that, I'm just saying.
They have separated now stormwater and sewer, so I don't know what the capacity is at the plant, I don't know what that's calculated.
But shouldn't we know our capacity? Shouldn't we know our capacity? I'm not talking about the politics of Port Huron. What is our total sewage capacity that we, as a township, can send to Port Huron?
Mr. Campbell, that is a township board question and/or supervisor question, cause that's administrative. We do not, that's not.
It's not a planning commission issue?
We don't, we're not pervy to that, you know, that contract, that agreement and those conversations with the city of Port Huron and capacity.
Well, like I said, if you go back to the older minutes, somehow you were involved.
Possibly in regards to taps, but I don't know what the capacity is today.
Well, the taps, in my mind, give you the capa- The taps, the capacity, it's all part of the map, right? So, I mean, as a planning effort, we, you can't, if you don't have capacity in the township, how can, how can we plan this?
Well, we could have capacity, but the city could come out and say, you don't get that now, because of what we bought. You know, we've had problems.
Well, all I'm saying is it's not, it's not visible enough. I don't know that, uh, to me, it seems like it should have a pretty significant role at, at the planning level. Also, it should be, and this master plan that's going around, to me, that whole subject should be detailed in that master plan, isn't it?
Westwater is, there's plenty of capacity, Lapeer Road, there's plenty of capacity left, plenty.
But again, it should be numbers, and we know that in the.
There's lots, there's lots that, that aren't being used, and frontages that aren't being used.
That's right.
But also, like I said.
And their allocation should have expired, right?
Can we finish? In between those lots, there could be a split. They would be assessed, they would be, it would be a benefit fee. So, there could be more in between those lots that are already recorded. So, there, there, actuality, there could be more taps than what's there, but there's plenty of capacity. So, for me to say there's three hundred on Lapeer, there's way more than three hundred on Lapeer.
I'm just, I'm just looking at some document from a planning standpoint that's kinda, gives you that barometer, you know?
I understand.
I mean, it seems logical to me, I mean.
Well, when I sat on, when, uh, oh, I can't think of his name now.
Lewandowski?
No, the gentleman who chaired this.
Mr. Loison.
Mr. Loison. I, he never, he just asked how many taps we had. Yeah, I don't think he knew either.
He asked that they were available.
If they're available, exactly. But he never said there was a.
Engineer, the waters.
Right, because.
We had the engineer.
Right.
And the zoning, say yes.
In regards to the review, that would be a request that I would make, or my expectation would be, when the engineer reviews, cause they're paying for that fee to do that review, that that will be on the letter. And if it's going to be an issue, that it would be on the letter saying, you do not have capacity, or you need the following improvements made, or you will need to, you know, increase the line, or something of that nature. I know where you're coming from, I know where the areas are, cause they were there when I was on the board.
Yeah, we got some problems.
So, in regards to that, yes. And there is some, you know, I, I'm very aware of what, what you're saying. Allen Road is an issue, it's all been an issue.
So as a citizen, but how do I get the information to say, hey, this is out of whack? I know it's out of whack, cause I've been to the meeting, I can see what's going on.
Yes.
A map, I'm looking just for documentation that says, hey, we all should be able to look at and say.
I would contact Rob. But like in Neil's defense, we're not gonna do something that would basically sabotage Port Huron. I mean, can you imagine the fiasco that would cause?
No, no, I'm not suggesting that, I'm just saying how we manage.
Like, talk about a basement flooding, talk about, uh, flooding into the river.
We'd be, we'd be in court.
Yeah.
Well, going back to the presentation by Monte, that said we had a problem, uh, because of, uh, capacity at Allen and or Pickford, and they're talking about, we had to increase the flow, cause it's backing up. So we have a problem, it's not, nothing.
There is a solution to that.
Yeah, but that was a five million dollar solution, do we have a cheaper one?
There is a solution to that. Actually, they put in a pump yesterday.
Over on, uh, Pickford, right? I saw him working there. Okay, but there was a engineering study going on with a five million dollar budget because of this, right?
The engineering study was seventeen thousand.
The project total was around five million.
That engineering had nothing to do, uh, that was prior to that five million dollar project. That's been going on.
No, this is just recent, it was.
Well, Tetra Tech had it before.
No, this is Monte just, just.
I, I understand, I was, you know, but the Tetra Tech started it.
Well, that I couldn't tell you.
I, I, I don't.
Oh, okay, fine.
Yeah, I can tell you, yeah, and Pickford was, and Pickford all happened because the township took them to court.
Yes.
Because nobody wanted sewer over there, and they fought tooth and nail. But it was court mandated to have it over there, because it was very similar to Smith Creek, where they were dumping sewage or leakage in the ditches.
They don't need polio.
So, yeah.
Okay, well, like I said, it, when I reviewed the history of the planning commission, they did have a, a view of this allocation. It was discussed fairly aggressively in some meetings. In fact, the one I cited, this, I don't know which this hundred and seventy unit was, I don't even know if it's developed.
That's what I was gonna, do you have a date for your comment there?
I didn't, I didn't bother, I could, because, you know, I'm worried about today, I'm not worried, but I would just, trying to tell you that, why I'm asking for these, because I didn't, I didn't create this idea, this is previous history. And there was a massive debate back then about this. And, and pinning it down and controlling it, and it was all done at the planning commission level.
We're still controlling it.
Yeah.
And as I shared, I'm not gonna talk, I'm not gonna speak on behalf of Bill, but we were both on the board when we revoked.
Yeah.
Those individuals were not happy with us, and the township board was not happy with us when we did that. But we did do it. We did revoke.
And then from now on, every year, they had to come back?
They had to come back.
Yes. And I can tell you, this project that we are dealing with, that was one of them that got revoked.
Yes.
Way back then.
Yes.
See, if you want.
Sixteen years ago.
There's, there was a big sign on Atkins Road, says lots for sale with taps.
Yes.
He, he couldn't say that.
No, you can't guarantee them, that's what they were, one of the debates.
So.
But the question, then, they were revoked, how is that process working now? Cause I haven't seen anything revoked lately, not.
But we haven't had any site plans that have been, that was triggered, cause there were site plans that were approved, but they were very old. And there was board members that had said, what about these projects? Bring them forward. To my knowledge, I am not aware of anything as older than one or two years, and just personally knowing on my radar, you have what was just approved last year, being the one on Allen Road here, and the one at Watons and Griswold. And correct me if I'm wrong, is there any other?
No, it's Grace Senior Living, which is down at the end of the line.
Yes.
Which there is, there's not even a connection there, and there was several, uh, special assessment hearings, trying to get the sewer even to there. And then, then it came up that that's gonna overcapacity Allen or Pickford, depending how you route it. And there was a great concern, and like I said, the budget that was proposed was five million dollars. And there was a great concern, and like I said, the budget that was proposed was five million dollars, was fairly significant. So, it looked like there was some question, and the, and the rationale was we had environmental and health concern. Well, if, as you say, if that's the case, then that should not be going forward. There should be some kind of a hole on that until this is resolved, because that's exactly what, I was at the meeting, Monty said they got environmental issues because of that, and they have, uh, health department issues.
There are solutions to that also, there's not only problems, there's solutions to that.
That's fine, but the project steaming forward, and I don't know, maybe the planning commission needs to review the solution, I don't know.
Well, the, the health department, we have no control over. They, that's a separate.
No, that was just what Monty said was a concern, I'm just giving.
Yeah, but they'll step in, it's like Eagle, we don't have control over Eagle.
No.
And they could screw up big time.
Okay, well.
So.
It seems to me that somehow we, more visibility or transparency would be helpful, at least to me. Uh, I don't know if it's a reasonable.
Well, that's, that's a township board you're gonna have to.
So it's got nothing?
I mean, we, we only have what we have.
Okay, well, Gary's on the board, is, uh, sewer allocation, well, you haven't been there a long, but they never, they never come up, do they?
But I think we're gonna have to.
I don't make, like, you gotta talk to Rob on stuff like that, that's not stuff that I even, like, I mean, I make, I say yes and no, and I do some research and stuff, but I can't.
Well, no, I'm saying we haven't.
You know.
All right.
I can't be the deciding factor.
I didn't mean that, I'm talking about, well, you would be a voter, right?
The last time we discussed that, I do know what you're talking about, Tetra Tech was in here, they gave a presentation, and the details had to do with dropping sewer lines on ninety-four for that subdivision right across from Horace Body subdivision on Range.
Yeah, poses.
Well, yes.
But that's, that's mothballed right now, they don't know where they're going with that, so I mean, that was, that dollar figure was to add those sewer lines, and it was a big mess, because they don't know how they're gonna do it.
Yeah, the routing was a big issue.
Yeah.
Well, at, at this time, we're gonna.
There's three different ones.
Okay, well.
I think, I think we're, we beat this horse to death, until we find out what the board wants us to.
Yeah, I appreciate, Mr. Campbell, what you're saying. I know now, in regards to reviewing the engineering letters, to do due diligence, and I would expect something to be on such letters. If it's on there, that's between then the township and the engineer. I'm not an engineer, so if the township's engineer's gonna tell me that they have access to water and sewer, and there's capacity there, and there's a tap in there, that's as far as I can go. It sounds like they found something else out in regards to that section of the township that has some other issues that need to be corrected for the overall district, not this near, this near, not necessarily just for one project, but the one project was the catalyst for that conversation.
Correct.
Got it? I, I, that's what I interpret.
Okay, yeah. All right, well, thank you.
Thanks, Ray.
Good point, Ray, yeah. Keep it up.
Reports, uh, there was no ZBA meeting. Gary Lopers, county board. You have any?
Not really a report, but, um, I used to work for the paper mill on the lake, Dunn.
Oh.
And, uh, I was thinking of just maybe a possible way to make some money for the township, but we used to have a contract with Verizon, and they would outfit our water tower with cell phone signals. I'm pretty sure whoever owns that paper mill still makes those residuals off the Verizon tower. So, you know, we just, we've been dealing with, uh, is it AT&T?
Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
What if we could monetize our water tower? Just a thought.
We do have a radio read on top of the tower as well.
Yeah.
That controls flows.
Sure.
It tells, goes into a line and that.
The SCADA, the SCADA system.
Yeah. And we have approached, uh, different companies about, uh, putting the tap in on top of that.
Yeah, why not, it's, it's already there.
Well, they, they don't think the district is the right area.
Okay, yeah.
Wondering on Leland.
Sure, yeah, for sure.
And I can't be within.
Yeah, Leland, yeah, you're right, in that field.
Wondering around the corner.
Yeah, there is, right, yep, yep.
Yep. It was just an idea.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's a good idea.
Yeah.
But it's a, they can't be within three miles, so, so it's, you know.
Well, yeah, we kinda had that conversation in regards to, yeah.
Yeah. Brian was, yeah, he told us all about it.
Yes.
Hey.
And the, the, the tower on Leland Road has a monarch butterfly sanctuary underneath it.
Oh.
That I didn't know.
Cool. You should see the monarchs there in the summertime.
Yeah.
Okay.
So the milkweed is a, is your.
Yeah.
Prior, they love milkweed, I guess.
And they put their eggs under it, the leaves.
Yeah.
Okay, anything else come forth board?
Move to adjourn at seven twenty-five.
Motion to adjourn, all of us in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Ours? Thank you, everyone.